Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us on this... Jesse, it's raining on this rainy Tuesday. Okay. Tuesday, September 22nd. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. That said, as usual, we welcome Pastor Jesse Louse of the Willow Hills Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation. Thanks, Jesse, for being here.
Thank you. Father, what a wonderful day to be alive here to see this rain falling from the sky. And Lord, we just say, "Let her rip." We need some rain here in this area, all over this western country. So, Lord, thank you for reminding us of how you will and how you do provide for us. And now, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for these men and women who serve this council and this town, this city. Thank you, Lord, for them. We know they have difficult decisions to make. It won't please everybody, but, Lord, we pray for decisions to be made for the betterment of the entire community. So, thank you, Lord, as you lead them and guide them through the thought processes that go on here today. We thank you for your presence here. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call.
Mayor Kirkendall?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kukneal is absent, excused. Councilwoman Arnold?
Here.
Councilwoman Blair?
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the proclamations. We have one proclaiming October 4th through 10th as Fire Prevention Week. Greg, somebody will be here. There's the chief. Okay.
Can I invite some folks down?
No.
Yes. Get some of the community risk reduction staff to join us down here. Prevention is what this is all about. These are some folks that can do that.
Is anybody left at the station?
Trust me, yes.
This week's proclamation is Fire Prevention Week, October 4th through the 10th. Whereas the city of Prescott, Arizona, committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Prescott, and whereas fire is a serious... That's why I can't see. Serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,755 people in the United States in 2013, according to National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responding to 369,500 home fires. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas three out of five homes, home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working. And whereas when smoke alarms should have operated but did not, so it's usually because batteries were missing or disconnected or dead. Whereas half the homes, home fire deaths result from fire reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas Prescott residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas Prescott residents should install smoke alarms and avert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing. And whereas Prescott's residents, who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan, are most prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Prescott's first responders are dedicated in reducing the occurrences of home fires, home fire injuries through prevention, protection, and education. And whereas Prescott residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. That doesn't rhyme, Chief. Effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Therefore, I, Merlin Kirkendall, Mayor of Prescott, do hereby proclaim October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all people of Prescott to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each sleeping area, on every level of the home, including the basement, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Prescott Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week. And that doesn't mean take 'em out after the week. And that's it. Thank you.
Mayor and council, on behalf of the men and women of the Prescott Fire Department, I greatly appreciate the proclamation. The folks before us today are the folks that are actually assigned to their primary division of community risk reduction. They do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work. I felt it critical to recognize these folks because they're the ones that actually get to interact with the public and advocate for safer homes and safer residents and hopefully reduce the risk in this community. When they fail regretfully, fire suppression has to take over. So, it's courtesy of these folks that we do the behind-the-scenes work. Thank you.
Greg, I think they were all prepared to talk. Okay, moving along. Let's go to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item 1A, approval of minutes for the city council meeting held on September 8, 2015. Item B, approval of advertising services agreement for fiscal year 2016 with Madden Media in an amount of $21,111 from the Arizona Office of Tourism Cooperative Marketing Program, City Contract Number 2016-055. Item C, approval of purchase of confined space rescue equipment in the amount of $22,616.17 from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated Grants Fund, City Contract Number 2016-069. Approval of payment... Item D, approval of payment in the amount of $16,450 through Vertical Communications for Mitel Telephone System Support and Maintenance using National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number 042109-MBS Various Funds. Item E, approval of annual ESRI Geographical Information System software support and maintenance using State of Arizona Contract Number ADSP010-00000131 in the amount not to exceed $17,000 Various Funds. And item F, approval of payment to OCLC Incorporated in the amount of $19,500 for the fiscal year 2016 Annual Shared Library Bibliographic Records Subscription.
Any questions, consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a discussion on item F, if we could pull that and then just go on to vote on the other ones.
Now, you want to discuss it separate?
Yes.
Okay. Chair will accept a motion to approve items A through E.
Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Motion made in second. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, let's go back to item F.
I just had a quick question. I don't know, Craig. The... I read in the backup material on this $19,000. It's for fiscal year, we're obviously into the two months of that fiscal year. Is this a necessity to get this paid promptly? Or do we... Can we hold off for a couple of months?
Well, I think, yeah, it is a necessity to pay for it promptly. And as explained in the materials, this is basically the backbone system for communicating regarding the shared library materials. So, it is fundamental to the operation. It's kind of like walking into your office, and if you have a computer or used to using that computer, if there's no computer there, your operation of that office is going to change dramatically. So, this is something which is fundamental to the operation of a library.
Okay.
Okay, are you prepared to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve item F on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Let's go to the liquor license consent agenda.
Mayor and council, on today's liquor license consent agenda, there is one application for a Series 15 special event liquor license. It's from Yavapai Big Brothers and Big Sisters. The event will be held at the Holiday Courtyard of the Grand Highland Hotel. The application has been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with city requirements and is being recommended for approval. And as you know, state law requires that a physical location may not be issued more than 12 special event liquor licenses in one calendar year. Holiday Courtyard has already been approved for six special event liquor licenses this calendar year. This will be number seven.
Any questions among the council? Is the applicant... Anyone here?
I do not believe there is.
They're not here? Okay. Any comments from the public? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to allow special license, event liquor license application 2A to the Arizona State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
Second. Okay. Motion made second. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, regular agenda. Item A.
Item 3A, public hearing and consideration of a new liquor license application for a Series 12 restaurant license from Sonia Isabel Gámez Wetmore, applicant for J&amp;J Restaurant located at 224 North Cortez Street. Ms. Wetmore is requesting a new license for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for J&amp;J Restaurant. This application has been reviewed by the Police Department and Community Development Department and found to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety, and the Police Department found it to be in compliance with state law. The application and license fees have been paid, and the application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and I believe the applicant is in attendance.
Okay, applicant here. Thank you for coming today. Tell us a little bit about your restaurant.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, would you like to say something?
I want to say thank you for your support to the whole community, and I hope to see you there.
Okay. That was a welcome, right? Okay. Any comments from the public, council? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made second. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Now, to approve.
Mayor, move to approve liquor license application number 12133627 for a Series 12 restaurant license for J&amp;J Restaurant located at 224 North Cortez Street.
Second. Let's vote.
Passes six to zero.
Item B.
Item 3B, public hearing and consideration of a person transfer liquor license application for a Series 7 beer and wine license from Amish Kumar Patel, applicant for Hotel Vin Dome located at 230 South Cortez. Mr. Patel is requesting a person transfer license for a Series 7 beer and wine bar license for Hotel Vin Dome. The Police Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law. The Community Development Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance. And the application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and a representative for the applicant, I believe, is in attendance.
Come on down, Mr. Patel. Tell us about the ghost. That's what everybody wants to hear, isn't it?
The ghost has been there for 90 years, or 95 years supposedly. Unfortunately, I haven't seen her yet.
You haven't yet?
No. Maybe after a few glasses of wine.
Maybe.
Who knows?
It probably helps, yeah.
I think that's where most of the stories come out.
Very good. Comments, council? Okay, anyone from the public? Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made. Seconded. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, now to approve the license.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application 12133627 for a Series 12 liquor or restaurant license... I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
Yep.
Let me start over. Mayor, I'd like to approve liquor license application number 07130023 for a Series 7 beer and wine license for Hotel Vin Dome located at 230 South Cortez Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, let's spend some money. Item C.
Item C, approval to purchase an MC-266 horizontal brush grinder from Rotochopper Incorporated in the amount of $371,475 Solid Waste Fund, City Contract Number 2016-032.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The Solid Waste Division is requesting approval to purchase a horizontal brush grinder for the processing of green waste at the Sun Dog Transfer Station. Since 2012, Yavapai County has periodically processed the city's green waste under IGA Number 2012-197. However, the county's brush grinder is not always available for the city's use, causing an overflow of material that disrupts service to customers. The Solid Waste Division diverts green waste daily from the waste stream at the Sun Dog Transfer Station. Green waste, which consists of tree trunks, branches, limbs, shrubbery, clippings, and other vegetation, is stockpiled on-site until enough tonnage has been collected for processing. Included in this green waste is tonnage for more than 20 FireWise communities in Prescott, creating and maintaining defensible space. These communities are primarily located in the areas defined and managed under the Wildland Urban Interface Code, and as such, have a need to manage vegetative growth through an aggressive fields reduction effort. The green waste they generate is transported to the transfer station. The Division stockpiles and processes approximately 4,000 tons of green waste each year, diverting it from the landfill for recycling. Once the material is processed into wood chips, it is made available free of charge to Prescott residents and others for use in landscaping and gardening projects. In 2012, the city entered into IGA Number 2012197 with Yavapai County for the purpose of renting a brush grinder owned by the county. The agreement includes the use of county personnel qualified to operate the grinder in addition to transportation of the grinder. Currently, the Division is only able to acquire the grinder once per quarter due to scheduling, processing at county facilities, and equipment breakdowns. In January of 2015, it was necessary for the Division to rent a brush grinder at a cost of $60,000 in order to catch up on processing material. The Division is requesting approval to purchase a grinder because diversion of green waste is now requiring a monthly effort. The Division frequently runs out of storage space at the transfer station for stockpiling material, creating a risk of fire from storing large quantities of green waste. Having a brush grinder permanently on-site will allow the Division to schedule material processing more frequently, whereby controlling the quality of the end product and allowing for proper management of the stockpile. Landfill disposal of the green waste in lieu of diversion would cost an estimated $220,000 per year. With the purchase of the new grinder, the Division will start diverting additional materials in the form of pallets and construction wood debris from the waste stream. This will result in an estimated 2,000 additional tons of diverted materials per year. The Solid Waste Division conducted an initial... An invitation for bid process, and on August 27th, eight bids were received. Vendors provided bids on a variety of models based on the specifications in the IFB. The Solid Waste Division evaluated the bids and selected the Rotochopper MC-266 because of its size, dust suppression system, track mounting, three-year extended warranty, three-year preventative maintenance package, and having the lowest bid. Based upon the results, awards Rotochopper as the lowest responsive responsible bidder is recommended. The bid includes delivery, freight, and all other related costs. The brush grinder categorized as agricultural equipment is exempt from Arizona use tax. Solid Waste Division has $550,000 budgeted in FY '16 for the purchase of a horizontal brush grinder. Additionally, the Solid Waste Division currently budgets $90,000 to pay for grinding services provided through the IGA, resulting in a payback period for the purchase of this item of less than five years. And with that, I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions, council? No?
I have a question.
Shoot.
You're on your best.
I hadn't been looking at the machine.
Oh, yeah.
I got you.
Sorry.
Steve, you're first.
Question. Shelf life for this thing, and number one. And number two, I guess a question to the city manager, the attorney. Is there any expertise or any extra training that goes along with the operations of this piece of equipment, being that it's of a dangerous venue out there? I mean, when you start talking about the folks that work in your office, have we looked at this to see if there's any extra insurance or training that needs to be provided to the employee?
Well, as far as the... There is extra training that would obviously go along with any kind of... Any piece of new equipment. It sounds like when we operate with Yavapai County under the IGA, Yavapai County provides the employees... I don't know what we do if we rent the equipment, if we have employees already trained, but certainly there would be extra training required to operate a particular piece of machinery. However, it doesn't affect our risk analysis, I guess, in terms of workers' comp coverage because there are, you know, the solid waste in the transfer station are probably one of the more high-risk work areas at the city because of all the moving parts and vehicles and, you know... So, grinder does, you know, does come into play as a sort of high-risk type or potentially high-risk type machine.
Right.
But with proper training and safety protocols, it shouldn't be any higher risk than any other operation we do.
Okay, thank you. And then the shelf life for it, five years, six years?
You know, that's a great question. I'll have to look and get back with you. I know we do have a three-year warranty on it. It's going to come with three-year manufacturer's warranty, plus we're including a three-year maintenance package. I'm sure there's going to be wear parts, just like any other piece of equipment, and, you know, as long as we maintain it and keep it running, I'm sure that we can make it last 10 to 15 years. I wouldn't doubt that.
Thank you.
Gene, go ahead before we... We'll just cut around.
Okay. You mentioned in your staff report that the grinder can take care of construction, wood debris, and pallets.
Correct.
Doesn't some of that construction debris have nails and glues in it?
Yeah, this particular...
And what happens to that stuff?
I'm sorry. This particular model has a magnet on the belt, so it'll pull the material... As it's... The conveyor belts ejecting the material, there's a magnet on the end, the head unit, and it will actually pull it off and drop it down below where the material's not going to be. So, it'll set back underneath where the belt is. So, the material will not include the metal.
But some of that debris is... Has glue on it, like the particle board, and isn't that toxic that goes back and used in landscaping?
I would have to look into that. We can also... We can look at the options of what type of material we put in there. We're going to control the flow of what material we recycle. Basically, we're looking to pull more wood out of the solid waste stream that goes to the landfill. So, it's really up to our personnel on the ground to pull that material out. So, it's going to be at their discretion to put that material aside. So, we'll be able to pick and choose what type of material goes in it.
Okay, good.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And following up to Steve's question, is the operation of this device going to be limited to the Solid Waste Division's staff? Or will any other department be allowed to utilize this piece of equipment?
Well, like I mentioned, we are working with the Fire Department with their FireWise program. So, it's basically going to be stationary. We're going to leave it... The plan is initially to leave it at the transfer station. That could change due to necessity or need. I'm sure a large storm or something like that came up, we could mobilize the unit and move it somewhere to do some additional grinding. But for the most part, it's going to be a stationary unit staying in the transfer station yard, and then material can be brought to it. So, we do our free slash in June, so that'll be another opportunity for us to process more material through there.
And I think the city manager maybe gets where my question with that is going. In dealing with these questions about hazardous duty and things of that nature, I want to make sure that we limit the usage to the Solid Waste Department for operating the piece of equipment.
That will be limitation. It's just like any other piece of equipment. It requires training. It requires operation by only authorized and trained and capable personnel. This is a pretty substantial machine, like some of our equipment out there. So, you know, the Solid Waste Division completely understands this type of equipment, the hazards and so forth, and has actually an excellent safety record, and we expect that that will continue.
Perfect. And my last follow-up question is, given the size of the piece of equipment, it basically requires a tractor or device to load it. Do we have that in our inventory?
Actually, we ordered this piece of equipment with tracks. So, it's a tracked unit that we can remote control, move around the yard because we do not have a tractor-trailer. But if it needed to be moved to another location, there are plenty of companies, private companies, that will haul and relocate that equipment for us.
And what about taking the raw material and loading it into the grinder?
We have our own tool carriers that we use for that. Currently, we do the same. We actually... We load the county's grinder. They actually... The person they provide is the one that operates the remote control, and our personnel load the grinder themselves.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then if I could just add that training is provided by the company. We did put that in the IFB that they will come out and provide 40 hours of training to our personnel. And additionally, we do require all... Anybody that operates equipment to go through a training. So, we document all the training that they receive, and they have to be signed off on all equipment to operate. So, we wouldn't just let anybody run it.
Great, thank you.
Comments from the public? Questions? Okay. That's okay, Dan? Okay.
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of an MC-266 horizontal brush grinder from Rotochopper Inc. in the amount of $371,475, City Contract Number 2016-032.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Item B.
Item D, approval of purchase of one each 2016 Ford F-450 regular cab four-by-four truck with 14-foot cargo box and high cube-mounted TV inspection system from Hughes Incorporated using Houston-Gavelston area contract number... Council Contract Number SC01-15, pricing in the amount of $221,112, wastewater fund, City Contract Number 2016-067.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. The wastewater division, working in conjunction with the Fleet Services Division, is requesting approval to purchase this video inspection unit. Back in early 2013, as a result of three sewer overflows, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality issued a notice of violation to the city. Subsequent to that, the city received a letter from the Arizona Attorney General informing the city of a consent order and fine for the violations. One outcome negotiated with the Environmental Department or Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and the Attorney General's office requires the city to perform a complete cycle of video inspections of parts of the sewer collection system and to continue these inspections on a recurring basis. Since the city does not have sufficient equipment in its fleet to perform these additional video inspections, prior to deciding to purchase this truck, an evaluation was performed by the Public Works Department to compare the cost of contracting out this work and doing this work in-house. The evaluation included the cost of this second unit plus two additional full-time employees. The evaluation identified an overall cost advantage to the city of approximately $1 million over one video inspection cycle, along with additional benefits of having more current condition information for maintenance and capital project activities. And based upon the evaluation results, the Public Works Department included in its current year budget, the wastewater fund budget, a second video inspection crew, which consists of two full-time positions and this vehicle. Funding of $300,000 was budgeted in the current fiscal year for this item in the wastewater fund. And this unit is necessary in order to comply with the consent order. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And also, Scott Gregorio, the wastewater superintendent, is here if you have technical questions.
Okay, Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And Stephanie, it's great to see you, and thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you, council.
I know during the budget process, we discussed this, and if you haven't had an opportunity to go see the camera in the sewer system, it's worth taking a look. Adding this additional crew is going to definitely be, I think, a benefit to the city. Having an additional truck makes a lot of sense. Our other one's starting to get old. It's been recently updated on its technology, but this is a good $221,000 spent for the
Counsel, anyone else?
I have one. Stephanie, thank you. And I guess a question would be for the city manager or yourself. The two additional employees, how are they funded? Are they funding... Be funded out of the Water Department, Sewer Department, or will the money come out of the general fund?
It's wastewater fund, council.
So, that is a defined account, defined fund?
Yes, yes. It is. It is an enterprise fund, wastewater fund, which receives revenue from the wastewater charges that are on the utility bill.
Okay. I just want the folks out there to know that it's not the general fund that we've I just want the folks out there to know that it's not the general fund that we've been squawking that we're short-changed on, but it happens to be a defined fund, so thank you for that.
Any comments, questions from the public? Thank you, Dan.
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of one 2016 Ford F-450 regular cab four-by-four truck with a 14-foot cargo box and high cube-mounted TV inspection system from Hughes Incorporated using Houston-Galveston area council contract number SC-01-15, pricing in the amount of $221,112.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, item E.
Item E, approval to accept two grants awarded to the City of Prescott Police Department by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety in the total amount of $35,000 for traffic enforcement and education programs.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Back in your February 10th meeting, we had approached council, which you approved for us, to submit an application for grant funding to the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety. These grant funds were in two different categories. We recently were just notified that they did award us $25,000 for DUI and education enforcement, and a second grant for $10,000 for speed and aggressive driving. Again, that's for a total sum of $35,000. That funding would cover overtime expenses for our employees to do, to do those particular enforcement, so we don't have to pull them off of their regular assigned duties. There is no matching funds that's required by this grant, and so there's no, you know, fiscal impact to the city. I'll answer any questions, if anybody's got any.
Charlie, you're up.
Mayor, thanks. Andy, just a quick question. You guys write your grants out of your own department and submit them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Congratulations on getting another award of a grant.
Thank you.
I think it's one of these things that continuously is adding to our service level in the community, and for those who may have missed it, Saturday was National Thank a Cop Day, so on a belated note, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Okay, need a motion?
Mayor, move to accept two grants awarded by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for traffic enforcement and education programs in the total amount of $35,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes six to zero.
F, when you're ready.
Item F, adoption of resolution number 4307-1516, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District, city contract number 2016-053, to accept funding in the amount of $600,000 for the Carlton Street-Alarkin Street pavement reconstruction and drainage improvements project.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. The next item for your consideration is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai County Flood Control District to accept funding for fiscal year 1516 in the amount of $600,000 for the Carlton-Alarkin Street pavement and drainage improvement project. The Yavapai County Flood Control District is a special taxing district that receives property tax proceeds. The flood control then uses these proceeds for planning, construction, and the maintenance of flood control improvements within the county. Flood control also provides funding to local government agencies for flood control and drainage-related improvement projects, as long as the project meets its criteria, which can be summarized as protection of life, protection of property, and the project must mitigate historical and documented flooding. Selecting an appropriate project, if we are to spend the money and time, we look for a project that is currently under design, knowing that we only have, we have actually less than a year to get it done. In this case, we must spend all the funding no later than July 31, 2016, and of course, the project must meet flood control's criteria. We are proposing to spend the flood control grant funding of $600,000 on a existing CIP project, Carlton-Alarkin pavement and drainage project that is currently designed, is being designed in-house. The project limits along Carlton is from Granite Creek to Alarkin, and along Alarkin from Carlton to Aubrey. The project will install new roadway, water, sewer, storm drain, catch basins, ADA ramps, as well as fix any sidewalk and curb along the project limits. Staff selected this project due to historical flooding, flooding that occurs along Alarkin-Carlton, and the very important fact that we must spend the money by July 31, 2016. Currently, the construction plans for Carlton-Alarkin are at 30% design level, and we envision completing the design by December 1st or sooner. We feel that if the contractor starts in the January, February timeframe, we have almost five, six months before the grant funding expires. Since construction time is estimated for four months for the drainage-related items, we feel that the project is positioned very nicely to spend the funding in time. The, the main points of the IGA are structured as follows. Flood control will be solely responsible for providing the $600,000. The city will be solely responsible for the design, procurement, right-of-way acquisition as needed, construction, inspection, and project management, essentially everything. The city will also be responsible for providing flood control a copy of the final plans. The city will be responsible to use the funds by, again, July 31, 2016, and lastly, be responsible for maintaining the improvements, which is essentially storm drain and catch basins. The proposed IGA is fundamentally a flow-through agreement, where the flood board is providing funds to the city, and any risk to the city from acts of the flood board is low. The proposed design-construction schedule is as follows. We're proposing design completion on or before December 2015, bid award in January 2016. We are planning to begin construction in the January, February 2016 timeframe, and construction will be completed on October 2016, again, with the understanding that the drainage improvements are the first thing to be installed, and that will be installed and invoiced before July 31 of 2016. The total project cost is approximately 2.1 million. The IGA will provide $600,000 for drainage-related improvements, catch basin, storm drain. The balance of the estimated project, approximately 1.5 million, will be provided from the water, wastewater, and streets and open space fund. And with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Looks like we got several. Charlie?
Mayor, thank you, and Charles, thanks for the presentation. By accepting the IGA, and this might be a question for Mr. Palladini, are we committing ourselves to this project? And let me go to my next question. This total project is $2.1 million. We have not completed the design. We have not gone out to bid yet. What happens if our bid comes in at 2.5 million to construct it?
The, the, well, there's still a decision that would have to be made, whether to proceed with the project at that point. The, the condition of the grant, the $600,000 from the flood control district, is that the project has to be completed by, by the date certain, so there'd be a, you know, the question would still remain, you know, the balance, would the, would the city want to proceed forward, would the council want to proceed forward with, with the, the balance of that project cost if it exceeded the estimate that's in the staff report? If the city decided it didn't, if the council said it didn't want to proceed forward, then we'd simply forego the, the $600,000 from the flood control district, and the project, and then the project could be put off for future.
Okay. I mean, ultimately, bringing $600,000 in from flood control is a good thing for the city. All of the taxpayers of the city are paying into that fund, so this is a positive. I just want to make sure we're not tying our hands if something goes really wrong, if you will, with the bid process, or our construction costs come in way high, and it's something where the next council doesn't want to move forward with it.
Right, and, and again, this is, this is sort of step one of two approvals. The second approval would be the actual award of the project to a successful bidder. If the estimate came in at a number that was exceeded expectations or exceeded, then the council could just simply decline to proceed forward with the project, at which point simply would not receive the, the grant funding from the district.
Okay.
So it doesn't obligate us to proceed forward, it does obligate us that if we're going to proceed forward, to proceed forward in a timely manner in order to receive the funding, or complete the project in order to receive the funding.
I mean, ultimately, if you've driven that neighborhood, the street needs to be replaced, utilities are ancient, it makes sense, but thank you.
Gene, you're it.
Yes, thank you. In the next two agenda items, we're going to be talking about water quality in Granite Creek and Watson Lake, and this project is going to be funneling storm water, or trying to channel storm water in the right direction toward Granite Creek. So I think we have a really good opportunity here to try something like a green infrastructure median strip that would take some of that storm water and filter it before it gets dumped into the creek, and contributing to the pollutants that we're sending downstream to the lake. How far are we in the design? You said 30%, and who's doing the design? Is there still time to think about something like that?
Mayor, Councilwoman Wilcox, we're at 30%, and, and we're, we just finished another design, so we're, we're hard-pressed. We're moving very quickly. December 1st, I'd like to see 100% plans. As far as who's doing the design, we're doing in-house, between myself and a couple other persons on staff. Again, it's a $2 million project. It's, it's complicated, not complicated, but it's big. It's, we have other things, so as far as, to answer your question, we did look at the possibility of doing something at the outfall, at Granite Creek, but it's the space there, if you go down there and you look at it, it's very limited. Now, I know that there are certain things that we can do with the catch basins. We call them pillows. We put them, these pillows in the catch basins, they catch sediment, and then there's other pillows that you can install that will pick up hydrocarbons. So those are the things that we can do easily, but as far as to answer your question on a, a median, anything is possible. We can design anything, but that would push the cost up considerably, and the slopes along Carlton are steep, and I've done these green projects before. When you talk steepness, it'd be very challenging to, to get the water to behave on these steep slopes with the medians, because what you want to do is slow down the velocities, let the, the sediments drop out, and, because, you know, the pollutants attach themselves to the sediment. It'd be challenging. We could look at it, of course, but I just want to let everyone know it's, there's a lot of work before December 1st to get everything wrapped up.
I'm glad to hear you're doing the design in-house, and I would encourage you to, to look closely at the opportunity to not only use the green infrastructure to filter the pollutants, but also beautify the area. It would slow down some of the traffic in there as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question, a couple of questions. If we weren't looking at one-third of this cost coming from us, the taxpayers, as county citizens, would this project even be on the board this year? Would we be doing this project if we didn't have $600,000?
Yes, we would. It's an existing CIP project. Probably something we might not be doing is the storm drain to the extent that we're doing.
I just hate buying something just because it's on sale.
Oh, no, understood. No, Carlton-Alarkin has the, the finished floor out there. They're actually lower than the top of curb. There was a drainage master plan completed by a consultant back in 2006, and basically, they called it the downtown drainage master plan. Basically, the limits of that drainage master plan was from Summit on the, on the west, Carlton on the south, Alarkin on the west, and I believe it was Sheldon to the north. So that was the area they looked at. They basically came up with nine drainage projects, and, and based, they came up with those nine because of the, the flooding, because of the, the low finished floors. So whenever your finished floor-
Sure.
-is lower than the top of curb, it rains, it's problematic. So we thought that since we did, we were going to do the roadway, water, and sewer, that we would apply the flood control money and put in a, a storm drain that essentially would, during the 100-year storm, would hopefully keep the water out from people's houses.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. Just a quick question. You know, I realize that we have a number of drainage projects coming down the road. We planned on them for a long time. Ultimately, this does help with the water quality that ends up down in the cesspool down there at the end of the, water all runs downhill, and it all ends up in probably Watson Reservoir at some point, or Willow Creek, or Willow Lake, or Willow Reservoir, whatever you want to call the thing. So it's instrumental that we proceed with some of these things to help answer some of the issues we're running into with ADEQ in some of the reservoirs. Am I correct?
Mayor, Councilman Lamerson, you're, you're correct. Again, by installing the pillows, we're demonstrating to ADEQ that we're, we're doing something. They're, they're on the water quality. Flood control is interested about, again, protection of property and, and life. That is an area that's been highlighted, again, by the drainage master plan for flooding, and again, we can easily demonstrate that by installing the pillows in the catch basins and doing other stuff, it's a water, we can claim bonus points, if you will, with ADEQ.
Well, thank, thank you, and I, and I did want to acknowledge Chuck Buttenger from ADOT just showed up in the room, and you know, this isn't something that's all brand-new. This is something that we've been working on for a long time, so thanks for moving it forward. You bet.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir. Two. We'll give you the number-one take.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Sandra Smith, 701 White's Bar. I have a question. It concerns the crossing signal on the southeast corner of Monizuma and Carlton. Is there any chance that could be moved to a position where it's in closer confluence with the two crossing ramps? Because where it sits now, it's really inconvenient for the north-south crossing.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, yes, as part of our design, we are looking at the intersection of Monizuma. Depending on what we have located there, we have signals there, we have limited right-of-way. We're going to do everything possible. Now, sometimes when, if we need to buy rights-of-way, that's an 18-month, maybe 24-month process, so what we'd like to do is keep on schedule, keep on budget, keep that, to that, that 2 million, 2.1 million. We will be looking at all the crossings, though, to do what we can to make sure that the ramps line up for pedestrians and bicyclists.
Good, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dr. Peter Kropnik, member of the Watershed Improvement Council from ADEQ. I'd like to sort of second Councilwoman's Wilcox's concern here, and as we'll hear more in the next presentations, we need to do everything possible to trap all the pollutants we can, and I hate to see us rush into constructing something that's not state-of-the-art just because there's money available. I think we need to consider water quality, as, as well as quantity in flooding, of course, in everything we do.
Good, thank you. Which, which kind of leads to a question that, that I was going to let fly. The $600,000, is that grant what moved this project to this point in the normal routine that we'd be doing projects?
Mayor, Council, my understanding is that the, this project, the Alarkin-Carlton, was already in the CIP budget book slated for the fiscal year 1516.
Okay.
And we saw an opportunity by using flood control grant money to, to basically improve the, or reduce, I should say, the flooding that occurs out there.
Okay, but if we had not had the flood control money, would we have taken this project to the extent that we're going to?
Everything except perhaps the drainage.
Okay, so the drainage might not have been a part of the project.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's where I was coming from. Anyone else? Okay, need a motion?
Mayor, approve to adopt resolution number 4307-1516.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay. H?
Item G, approval of a settlement agreement with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADEQ, for the Watson Lake- Quality, ADEQ, for the Watson Lake total maximum daily loads, TMDLs.
Mayor, Council, I think the council memo really lays out pretty well the background of this, so I'll be brief. As you recall, the TMDL, we, the city had an objection to sort of the science behind the TMDL report that was published last spring, and the council authorized us to appeal that decision to an administrative law judge. As a result of that appeal, we also requested a settlement conference with ADEQ. That settlement conference occurred on June 15th, out of which this, essentially, the bones of this agreement, this settlement agreement, were agreed upon amongst the ADEQ staff, the Attorney General's office, and the city staff that was there. It did take quite a while to actually get the sort of form of settlement agreement approved by the Attorney General and by ADEQ. The basic terms of the settlement agreement are that the city will continue to collect data on TMDL for the lakes for, you know, for a period of up to five years. But that obligation to collect data is part of our stormwater permit, so it doesn't, it's not an additional obligation on the city. It's that data collection is simply one of our current obligations. That data collection, then, will be provided, or that data information will be provided to ADEQ, who will redevelop a TMDL decision within three to five years, at which point, I think, we'll have a, we'll have a more reliable science to base then, to then base decisions on as to what actually needs to get done. So it's, I think, as far as the settlement agreement, it's really everything we were asking for when we went, that was the intent, was to get essentially this type of agreement. And we did get it, and we recommend the council approve it, and we proceed forward with the data collection process, which is the next agenda item. Happy to answer any questions.
Jean.
I have a number of questions and a comment. I'll start with the comment first. Although this looks like a good deal for the city, I don't think it's really a good deal for the users and the citizens of, users of the lakes, and the visitors, and the citizens of Prescott, because it doesn't get us to where we need to go. It slows down the whole process of cleaning up the lakes. It really defers our responsibility for monitoring and coming up with a plan sooner rather than later. So that troubles me a little bit. I'm conflicted because it will save the city some time and money, and it will give us more time to develop a monitoring plan, which hopefully will be better-based, in better science, hopefully. However, it seems like we are stepping out in front and assuming a bigger burden than we might have to otherwise. There are other MS4 permit holders in the Granite Creek Basin, ADOT, the county in particular. And then there are a number of multi-sector general permit holders who also contribute pollutants to the Granite Creek watershed and the lake. So I don't think they were involved in these settlement discussions, were they?
No, this was a, essentially, a appeal of the ADEQ decision. So because ADEQ, the TMDL report, or the TMDL document that came out, didn't indicate, I mean, it was to the city of Prescott, and it was about the city of Prescott. So we don't have, you know, there aren't any other parties involved to that report.
Okay. So what happens with the responsibility that those other parties may have in contributing to continuing pollution of the lake and the watershed?
Well, I think the purpose of this agreement is to, is to actually have good science behind the decision, to support a decision to do whatever it needs to get done. Right now, and I would defer to the, to the water quality folks, but the purpose is, is we really don't know. We don't have good science. At least the TMDL doesn't give us good science as to what needs to get done, or what should be done. So in essence, in sort of layman's terms, how I would put it, sort of, you know, we'd be simply guessing at what needs to get done without having good science. And so I'll defer to the, to the water quality folks to maybe, to go into a little bit more science-y stuff.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. If I may respond to that, the TMDL assigns a pollutant load reduction to the city of Prescott, as well as those other parties and permit holders that you mentioned. The appeal of the TMDL was an action taken by the city of Prescott alone. So when the TMDL is final, those permit holders and other stakeholders listed in the TMDL are, they are assigned a pollutant load reduction. So they are, they are responsible, separate from the city, separate from this appeal or settlement agreement, they are responsible to answer to ADEQ for those pollutant load reductions. So it was of most importance to the city because the city owns Watson Lake and will be responsible for the primary mitigation measures taken in the lake. If that...
I guess the question is, should we be? And I read the article quoting Councilman Lamerson. I think he was asking the same question. Should the city be primarily responsible?
Well, the city owns the lake, so for in-lake actions, yes. For the watershed, the other landholders or jurisdictions in the watershed, the Yavapai County Flood Control District, under their MS4 stormwater permit, they are responsible for a certain amount of the pollutant load reduction. ADOT is also a permit holder. And yes, the construction general permits and the industrial permits, they're all going to be responsible, but for a very, you know, their responsibility is proportional to their jurisdiction in the watershed. And in the watershed, the city of Prescott is the primary jurisdiction. We have the most land area, the largest MS4, and again, we own the lake. So we are talking about two separate things here, the in-lake measures, as well as trying to prevent the pollution from getting into the lake.
And what happened to the Watershed Improvement Council and all this?
Well, ADEQ has reinvigorated the Watershed Improvement Council. They started this last spring. So it has been meeting monthly, for the most part, and the city of Prescott has been participating in that. The Watershed Improvement Council has been focusing primarily on Miller Creek, one of the impaired tributaries to Granite Creek, trying to focus in on what are potential sources of the E. coli in Miller Creek. So they really are, it's kind of a specialized effort at this time. It's not as broad-scale as the original effort back in 2009, 10 through 12.
Okay. And then this one really goes back to John, I think. Although all actions required by the city of Prescott hereunder are agreed by the parties to be lawful, ADEQ does not, by its consent to agreement, warrant or aver that compliance with this agreement will constitute a result in compliance with Arizona law. Notwithstanding ADEQ's review and approval of any materials submitted pursuant to this agreement, the city of Prescott shall remain solely responsible for compliance with all other laws, and so forth. So what are we really settling for?
Well, what that means is that what we do under the agreement is agreed between ADEQ and the city to be lawful, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're doing all that we're required to do under all of the ADEQ and EPA regulations. In other words, all of what we do is lawful, but, but, but all of what we do doesn't comply with all, necessarily, all of the other obligations and that we're obligated to comply with.
So it's really narrowly focused to the appeal?
Very narrow. It's exactly, it's specifically deal with the TMDL report that came out, that ADOT published, and so that was the specific appeal. It's still, yeah, we still have to comply with all of the other, and PDS, and all the other water quality and watershed requirements. This is specifically about the lakes and not about necessarily the watershed, although I think the next item talks about the data collection we're doing will include the watershed, I believe, as part of the, as part of the data collection. So, and then, and then, and so, sort of regardless of the agreement, this agreement essentially doesn't get us off the hook to comply with all of the other requirements that we're obligated to comply with. Essentially is what it says. It just deals specifically with TMDL.
Okay. And then finally, I know there's been an awful lot of work done by the Lakes Committee, and I think Marlon, you were on that committee, and Prescott Creeks. And what's happened to all that work? Is that invalid, or is ADEQ actually looking at that and incorporating that in what we're going to be developing as a monitoring plan?
I don't know. I wasn't involved in the Lakes Committee. I'm aware of the, some of the ongoings. But as I understand, that's a, you know, a citizen committee, and this is a regulatory action, and the two don't necessarily tie together directly.
And remember, when the, maybe going back a little bit, the TMDL study that, or the conclusions that ADEQ made was based on a model, and I, it's the bathtub model?
Mm-hmm.
And again, and quickly if I'm wrong, but it's sort of a one-size-fits-all kind of model that we, that our staff didn't believe was appropriate for this particular situation. So that's where I think, you know, at its assets, we're saying that the science was flawed. In other words, we, there are different models and in different ways to collect data. At the end of the data collection, again, in that three-to-five-year period, is when ADEQ will come back and, based on that data, then develop a TMDL, which then allows us to proceed forward with whatever cleanup, or with whatever mitigation, I guess is a better word, that we would, we would proceed with. So it's based on real, good, solid science. I can't address sort of what was done in the past, but this is, again, specifically dealing with the, what ADEQ said our TMDL was, sort of irrespective of what maybe other studies have shown.
Okay. Well, and as far as what recommendations may have come out of the Lakes Committee, that is something that the city, city staff, as we move forward to deal with the TMDL, which is the next agenda item, that's where those, those things can come into play then. It really doesn't have anything to do with the actual regulatory item from ADEQ, but how we respond to that regulatory item and what we do next, as far as making management decisions.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. And just echoing the comment, I realize that a lot of effort has gone into this whole process, and you get the Attorney General's Office involved in ADEQ and our legal department. I'm appreciative of that work. But I've also been very vocal since the beginning of this whole debacle that I think we missed the boat on opportunities. We are where we are today. I don't like this agreement, this settlement agreement at all. The majority of it, in my mind, is slanted towards ADEQ. If you read throughout it, ADEQ will, ADEQ will, throughout, throughout, throughout. And compliance with the terms of the agreement, I think, creates a potential loophole for us that we're not going to be able to utilize. But what really concerns me is that Section 5, after at least three, but not more than five years from the date of this agreement, ADEQ will develop a new model, or recalibrate the existing model for Watson Lake, incorporating all appropriate new data. ADEQ will retain its discretion to choose the model and methods used. That type of language concerns me.
Well, and they have that authority, whether we enter into the agreement or not. In other words, that's, that's what ADEQ, that's their regulatory authority. They determine the method and the means and the model at which they make a determination. So that's nothing different than the authority they already have. The difference is that the current outcome is, I think, what we contend to be flawed science, and, and what we, I think, expect or hope for is that we'll have a better, better basis to, you know, to make conclusions from, better science to make conclusions from. And then from there, you can then make sort of educated decisions about what you do versus the model that ADEQ used, you know...
Ultimately, though, when you look between Section 11 and Section 5, and the way I read it, not being an attorney, if ADEQ determines to use the exact same model with the new data, and we don't like it, it specifically says, "Compliance with the terms of this agreement shall be no defense to an action to enforce any such permits or requirements."
And we also don't waive our right to further appeal a decision if, if, if ADEQ uses a model based on the new data that we, we object to. So it could continue on, and then you have an administrative law judge kind of make, make the decision at that point. So, you know, again, I think that this was based on our, you know, staff, the subject matter experts, they believe that this was the, you know, this was sort of the, the objective of trying to get a settlement agreement.
And I understand where we're trying to get to, and I think one of the frustrating factors here is the next item, we're taking the next step to start doing all of this data collection, which I fully support, because we need to continue to do that. But I don't see anything coming from this for three to five years, and even then, it doesn't sound like we're going to be much further than where we are. So, yeah. So those are just my comments on the item. Thank you.
Steve?
Well, I just call it all government garbage, as far as I'm concerned. I go back 1998, when I first got on this council. The same problem today, 16, 18 years ago, still exists. You know, the bottom line is, they're polluted, they need to be dredged, they need to be scalped on the bottom, they need to be cleaned out. I don't have to go do all those studies. We know the pollutants exist. We've had the potholing done. So in another three to five years, I agree with Charlie and Jean, then we have a plan in three and five years. Then we have to study a plan for another three to five years. So when are we going to actually get something done out there instead of employing people to look at plans?
Well, I think we need to separate, the TMDL is a regulatory action. It is not, it does not determine what the city does. It does not determine the city's management of the lake. So right now, with this settlement agreement, this TMDL becomes final, and we have this agreement to revisit the data, to do a certain number of actions, collecting data. The city has to develop a lake management plan, and those things will, will happen immediately. Right now, city staff, we do not feel like we have the information we need to know exactly what to do with the lake. ADEQ's studies did make management recommendations, such as dredging. However, we really have to look at the feasibility of that, the cost of that, for the effectiveness of it. We also have to look at the watershed efforts as well. So it's important to recognize that we're not putting off doing anything for three to five years. We are saying, this agreement with ADEQ is that we are going to revisit their, their TMDL. It doesn't, we're still going to be required to comply with that TMDL in three to five years. We still have to comply with our stormwater permit. The city is moving forward. We're not putting anything on hold, which is, I think, also to address something Councilman Wilcox asked about earlier.
But can you see a frustration level here when we bought the reservoirs in 1998 from Chino Valley Irrigation District? Look how many years we've gone past that, knowing they were polluted then, still polluted today, and still we want to study it some more?
Well, the city did not write a lake management plan or determine management for the lake at the time of purchase, so we are looking at that after the fact. That was something that should have been done a long time, a long time ago.
Charlie?
Mayor, thanks. And your comments are hitting the nail on the head. You know, we have to continue to move forward to address the issue. I'm frustrated that, you know, we bought the lakes, and we have this gigantic problem, and, you know, a lot of time has gone by. We haven't developed a lake management plan, but we've got the staff in place to accomplish that. We're going to use the data and the next agenda item to help us get there. But, you know, again, my frustration really lies with ADEQ and the process that has led us to today. I think ultimately, when we have the sit-down with all of the contributors to our watershed and start to really figure out a plan, that's when something will happen. But I feel that that's still some time away. Again, I'm just frustrated with ADEQ, and I feel like we're still in a corner that we don't need to be in.
Mayor? Go ahead. I can, I can shed a little bit more light on the technicalities of what we're looking at here. What we're, the steps that we're trying to take right now are in unison, but they're also different than what we challenged ADEQ with. also different than what we challenged ADEQ with. We wanted them to take another look because what they did, in our opinion and the opinion of our consultant, was very light, and that bears witness with the opinions of our consultants. What we want to do is, we're not stopping and waiting on them to do anything, but the next council agenda item is taking forward the next steps to get a better understanding of exactly what we have so that we can create a model, something similar to, like the sewer system model that we created a few years ago, which I was involved with that modeling effort also. Without that sewer model, we, and the study that went into it, it took a lot of personnel hours out in the field to see what we had, but now we have been able to identify specifically 20 miles of sewer system that we need to replace. We know that there's 595 manholes that should be replaced. We know that in Max I and I, when we get a lot of rain, that there's 195 manholes that could potentially overflow within the city. We're able to identify all these things. Without, without the model, it's much, much more difficult to do that, and city staff's kind of stabbing in the dark. As problems arise, we're going and putting out fires instead of being proactive and being able to incorporate it into our capital program so that we have a long-term plan. That's what the next agenda item is pushing us into. That's what the agreement with ADEQ is helping to push us into, is they're going to take another look to give us something better, while we continue to progress on our own to tackle this problem.
Thank you. Hi. Steve, sometimes there's an advantage or disadvantage at being here so damn long. But...
I don't know. I water skied in those lakes when they were dumping sewage out of the plant. Maybe that's why I have a working memory.
You know, number one, we need to quit calling them lakes.
I know, that's right.
That would be a good first start. They're a catch basin for this whole area. When it rains, that's where the water goes. But it wasn't a problem when they were a catch basin for CVID because they drained them every year and used the water to irrigate in Geno Valley. So that allowed some of the bad stuff to escape and go on downstream. So I think we've got a long-term battle ahead. I don't know whether it'll be won in the courthouse or in the laboratories or whatever. But they are what they are. The original intent was not to have a recreational lake out of it. It was a place to store water so that you could dump it every year. And we're trying to use it for something very different now, even though the purchase was somewhat predicated on the water to be used for recharge, not to keep it at a certain level for recreation. So I think it's much bigger than we all can even anticipate, that as long as there's drainage from upstream properties coming into Watson and Willow, there will always be things going there unless we can put a screen out there to catch it before it gets there. So I think the agreement is better than where we were, and now then everybody understands and is working on it that we should move it forward, and the next council, and the next council, and the next council can continue the process. But as long as it's a catch basin, it'll never be a perfect place for recreation. We can improve it, and I hope we can, but it'll always be what it is unless you're willing to drain it every year and get rid of the bad stuff that came in the previous year. So anyone in the audience, anyone else that wants to speak to this? Yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like Councilmen Arnold and Blair and Councilwoman Wilcox, I am extremely frustrated with this situation. I want to add a little more explanation to why. First of all, the impairment of our lakes is due to two very distinct and separate problems. One of them is the one you're about to study, the pollutants carried in through the watershed. The other one is that the lakes have filled with sediment so badly that the bottom is so close to the top that the weed cycle of the growth and death and decomposition of the weeds is creating another part of the pollution that has nothing to do with the pollutants you're studying that are carried in on the watershed. And the only answer to that is dredging. And I believe a previous consultant told us that, and we chose to ignore it. So that's my two cents.
Yeah. I've had some of the old timers tell us, "Don't go out there and drill a hole because you'll drain the lakes." So who knows what's down in the bottom? I think we all agree to that, yeah. Jim?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Amanda, I appreciate the work you guys are doing over there in the water department We've been dealing with this for quite a while. This isn't new. And I agree with your frustrations, Steve. You know, we know what they are out there. But the fact of the matter is, ADEQ is a regulatory arm of the state. And I agree with John. They carry a bigger hammer than what we have, and we're going to have to comply with this stuff whether we like it or not. And working with ADEQ, or working with SRP, or working with some of these other governmental agencies rather than working against them or working in conflict with them makes more sense. We're at the table with ADEQ, and we're at the table at this point in time with SRP. Remember when Cornrump came up here and told us, "You dredge the lakes, you got a problem with SRP if you're not working with SRP at the same time"? Well, you know, there's things that we have to take into consideration when we just set out to go do something. So it's my two cents, where if this, while it may not be perfect, this agreement's better than no agreement. At least we're down at a table working with somebody that we're going to end up having to work with anyway.
You're going to put that in the form of a motion, Jim?
I don't want to make it sound like our folks aren't doing anything. We've never had the number of people on staff to carry forward some of these studies, but we've had independent studies done all along. And I agree with you, Mayor. Back in the day when the catfish were flopping on the side of the banks when they drained the reservoirs, you know, we should have done something a long time ago. And here we are here today, waiting for a long time ago to come again, and frankly, I hope I can see it done before I die.
Need a motion?
What about more public? What about public?
Sorry.
What about more public comment?
Oh, I didn't see anybody else's. Yeah, come on down. Got to stick it out there. Okay.
I'm Chuck Budinger. I live at 1802 Short Line Lane. I'm here as a private citizen and as a former member of the Lakes Committee, and I know where that report is, Gene.
On a shelf.
Actually, I have it right here. I have concerns about the settlement as well. One is the financial impact. The agenda memo says that there's no impact due to the sampling is part of the existing stormwater permit. However, Section 3 states that both ADEQ and City of Prescott will collect samples outside of those required by a ZPT's permit. That's the same as the stormwater permit. So I think the settlement should be delayed, not voted on this session until we understand better that comment. Also, I think we need to determine the legality of the settlement, like Gene was saying. ADEQ has already provided a legal mechanism to address all or most of the concerns in the settlement through the Watershed Improvement Council. Three places in the TMDL report, ADEQ defers discussion of shortcomings in the TMDL development to the WIC. So there are issues that they recognized needed to be done. So I think the settlement operates outside that legal framework. Also, commenters to the TMDL are written into the Arizona Administrative Record. That is, has the force of law. There are people that have commented on very similar things that the city has addressed in this settlement that need to have, people need to have time to go back to their comments and see if this settlement infringes upon those agreements with ADEQ. In other words, the response from ADEQ to the commenters, which I was one as a member of the Lakes Committee, I don't know if those, if this settlement conflicts with those Also, until all the other permit holders have had a chance to comment, I think this measure should be shelved until that time. So until we know more about the financial responsibility, know more about the legality, know more about the commenters, and until the permit holders have had a chance to comment, I think the settlement measure should be shelved until further time. And we have a lakes plan and a funding mechanism, if you'd like to see it. I'd like to actually submit it in to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay?
I wasn't going to speak, but I guess I have as much involvement in the lakes as anyone else in Prescott. A couple of things. I was very blessed and fortunate to be able to read every article saved by Elizabeth Ruffner on the lakes. They are now archived except for one article, which I still hold at Charlotte Hall Museum Archive Center. One comment, the lakes were originally purchased and voted on primarily for recreation, not storage. If you read the actual language, it does say recreation first, to include swimming. Secondly, I personally, when we had the lakes subcommittee and we had eight great speakers, invited Greg Cornrump, and I remember his comments exactly to counsel. "The water behind the dams on your side belongs to you. You do whatever you want. We get our share when we're supposed to. Those are storage units for recreation." Now, he was among the original people when they had the discussions for the purchase of the lakes, and I personally was told by him, "I can't wait for the day when I can bring my son here to swim." So in 1998, the voting residents of Prescott decided to buy those lakes, reservoirs, what do you want to call them? And they were led to believe that they would have access to those lakes for more than storage, boating, fishing, docks, to include swimming. They have lost, in essence, their riparian rights, and by that I mean the right to swim. And that is a legal right that the city signed up for, and they're not getting it. And now, we know that they have purchased a defective product, and nothing has been done in 16 years, as Councilman Blair has so aptly put, nothing. And I don't want to be so old that I can't find the lakes before I can swim in them. And that's going to happen because I saw some really great dance moves here. I'm a good dancer, but I saw some great sidesteps, and I don't really like it. As a resident of Prescott, I deserve the right to use what I paid for, and I'd appreciate if you throw this out for now and wait till we sit down again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay?
Mr. Mayor? Counsel, I'm Steve Sishka, 1045 Highland Circle. What happens if you don't approve this today?
Well, if the agreement's not approved, then we would continue to litigate this in front of the administrative law judge, which in all likelihood is probably at least a year-long process, the outcome of which is then appealable further, depending on, you know, who doesn't like the outcome and so on and so forth. So litigation simply continues.
You could curbe that?
Do I can curbe?
Your professional opinion? If we don't?
He's the city attorney.
Mayor, I think one difficulty to answering the question that Steve presented in the city attorney is we discussed the settlement in executive session, so I don't know what can be discussed here today about what led to the decision to move forward in trying to find settlement with ADEQ.
But, you know, we, again, even though the, because it's not a final settlement agreement, we, it's probably advisable not to talk about the, some of the rationale behind it because it hasn't been finally approved. I mean, those would sort of be negotiating points that you wouldn't necessarily want to talk about in public.
I got a question. The lake plan that Chuck submitted that Jim and I were part of as well, did anybody ever review it? I mean, did ADEQ review it? Did anybody put any merit behind it? Or was it just an act of fatality? Well, I mean, who, what happened, Chuck?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good question.
Well, I mean, I'm seeing it sit here as, not unlike a lot of things we have hanging around the city that are old and dusty. I'd like to know what happened to this one.
I don't know what happened to it. We submitted it, and it kind of disappeared. But it has been looked at by one of the authors of the supporting documentation that led to the TMDL, Dr. Walker, who wrote the section on the limno corrals. For those of you who don't know, they're long columns of nets that you can use as a test tube, and he gathered all his information on the biology of the lake from those. I asked him to look at it, and he actually wrote into his document that was submitted to ADEQ that it had merit. So he has looked at it. I think, I know Susan Fitch has seen it at a public hearing here in this room. We had students from Yuavapai County come and do a presentation on that very thing. So, but it's never moved forward out of that. Also, I would like to address some of the comments regarding, "We don't know really what to do." I mean, this whole settlement is about a model. Model will tell us percent contamination, you know, waste load allocation, percent concentrations, yada, yada, yada. The data from the supporting documents from Dr. Gremilian and Dr. Walker clearly state that dredging of the lake is necessary. You can't get away from it. It's something that has to happen, and I think it's something that needs to start looking at. Part of the submittal is a program from the Corps of Engineers, Section 206 of the Water Resources Development Act, where they will come in and do a $100,000 feasibility study, which is ironically very similar to the proposal from Foster Wheeler. We don't have to pay for it. They'll do the feasibility study. The key is that it is a aquifer, not aquifer, I'm sorry, aquatic ecosystem restoration plan. But when you look at that and you look at what we have to do to correct the lakes, they're very similar operations. So that's what that is, that's where it came from, and other people have looked at it, and there is merit to it, so. And I can show you in the document where he said that.
Thank you, Chuck. I appreciate it.
I think we need to remind ourselves that the management of the lake, how the city chooses to manage the lake, is a separate discussion from the TMDL settlement agreement with ADEQ. The document, the lakes plan, that Chuck has just submitted, is something that the city can look at and incorporate as we move forward into management, but it really does not affect the TMDL settlement agreement. It's very important to keep those, we're kind of muddling those two issues right now. One is a legal, kind of a legal and regulatory determination, but ADEQ doesn't tell the city how to manage the lake, just that we do need to do something to reduce the pollutant levels in the lake, which we will do through various management actions, which the city will determine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, where you want to go?
Mayor, I do have a follow-up question. Section 2 states that upon completion of data verification, ADQ will submit the Watson Lake TMDL for the EPA for approval. So we're going to let them go on and submit the TMDL today with the goal that over the next three to five years, we're going to be working on new data collection, new modeling, and submission?
No, the, 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 you addressed that issue? On paragraph 2, Section 2.
Can you ask the question again, please?
Yep. Section 2, so, you know, trying to read through this in some order. Section 2 says, "Upon completing the data verification, ADQ will submit the Watson Lake TMDL for EPA approval." What data are they verifying and what TMDL is being submitted to the EPA?
There was some statistics that ADQ showed in their tables having to do with water years and flow, and there was some discussion in the settlement, our settlement conference about correcting that data or whether that data was correct. So that was, that's what that data is referring to. They were going to go back, and we, the city provided them with some of our data for the water year. They were going to fix those tables essentially. So they were going to double-check those tables and correct any mistakes if they were, in fact, incorrect. And then, yes, submit the TMDL to EPA for finalization.
And what's the anticipated timeframe for that?
That's a very good question.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are they going to submit the TMDL basically as it's written with a few modifications sometime in the next year or two while we continue to work through all these other things?
My understanding and the feeling that we got from ADQ during our settlement conference is that they are under a lot of pressure from EPA to finish this, to wrap this up. It's been in the works for many, many years. So that was the agreement we came to, is that if they correct some of these immediate items, we agree that this TMDL can be final with the caveat that we revisit, revisit the TMDL in three to five years after the city has done some work on our own, and they will continue to do some data collection in the watershed. We'll work together. And that's the condition that we revisit it.
Okay. So Mayor, in follow-up to your question, because I think there's still some issues that need to be addressed, I would be supportive of tabling this to the next voting meeting.
To the next voting meeting?
I'm comfortable with that. I think we can potentially address a few concerns, and if we can't overcome them, then we can vote yes or no or table indefinitely.
Yeah, that's going to be about three weeks. What is the next voting meeting?
October 1.
Okay. Is that the date you want? Put it in the form of a motion?
Mayor, move to table consideration of item G.
G.
Until October 14.
Councilman, I would suggest you might want to consider H as well because they go together.
The one comment, and thank you for bringing that up, let me digress for a second. This will, this is the second meeting that we've had a representative from the firm that we're consulting with here attend one of our meetings for numerous hours, and likely will be doing it for a third time. I've got no problem tabling them collectively, but I, you know, at a certain point in time, we're spending an immense amount of their time while we work through some issues on an underlying agreement.
Or another option would be to approve the contract subject to a notice to proceed upon finalization or a decision on the, on the TMDL settlement agreement.
So Mayor, with that, I think the, I would agree with what the manager just said. So I'd like to table G and go ahead and move forward with the discussion on H today.
So we want to discuss it further?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a second on the motion?
A second.
You second it. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, move on to item H.
Item H, award of city contract number 2015-1842 AMC Foster Wheeler for the Upper Granite Creek Watershed and Watson Lake TMDLs and Stormwater Quality Monitoring Plan in the amount not to exceed $114,000.
Good afternoon. So for your approval today, we have a professional services agreement with AMEC Foster Wheeler for regulatory compliance with ADQ's Watson Lake and Upper Granite Creek Watershed Total Maximum Daily Loads, or TMDLs, and the municipal Separate Storm Sewer, or MS4, permit. The contract is divided into three tasks. The first two tasks provide technical and professional support on the TMDLs. AMEC has been assisting the city on the TMDLs under contract number 2013-147, which is nearly complete. The proposed contract before you today will build off of the work that has been performed under the existing contract. And as we have just discussed, the city has reached a settlement with ADQ on the appeal of Watson Lake TMDL. The item, the task number one had initially, when it came before you in May, initially included AMEC supporting the appeal. However, the current contract, we have removed that because of the settlement agreement. The current first task is to outline an action plan of the steps to develop a lake management plan, which is a requirement of the Watson Lake TMDL. So the city is required to develop a lake management plan. The steps in this action plan may include additional collection of lake water quality data, defining the sample parameters, sampling methodologies and equipment needed to collect the data, and the creation and calibration of models for the lake and watershed. The item in this task will be guided by the settlement agreement. This action plan will provide the foundation for identifying future projects that will provide feasible and cost-effective water quality improvements. The second task is for technical support and analysis of the Granite Creek Watershed E. coli TMDL. ADQ released the draft TMDL for public comment in December 2014. AMEC provided city staff with a review of the document, the data, and the model used to determine the pollutant load reductions under the previous city contract. So the proposed contract will provide for AMEC's continued support and analysis during the next steps of the TMDL process. This is similar to the support they provided the city for the Watson Lake TMDL. So currently, the Granite Creek Watershed TMDL is not final. We still have a variety of steps to go through and do need the consultant on board for that. And the final, third task in the contract is to develop a stormwater quality monitoring plan. So this is a requirement under the ADQ MS4 Stormwater Permit. This permit requires the city to develop a monitoring plan and begin monitoring municipal stormwater discharges to impaired water bodies. In a meeting between ADQ and city staff in December 2014, the city agreed to begin developing this monitoring plan. And we have been providing ADQ with progress updates since January 2015. We expect that it will take about a year to develop the plan, and once the city begins collecting monitoring data, it will be submitted to ADQ as part of the MS4 annual report. ADQ will use the data to determine compliance with the TMDLs and the stormwater permit. The stormwater monitoring data will also have additional uses, such as contributing to watershed modeling that may be performed as an additional or a future task. So funds for this professional services agreement are available through the water, wastewater, and streets and open space funds, as well as monies collected through the aquifer protection fee in fiscal year 16. Myself, Ben Burns from Public Works, and a representative from AMEC, we have Don Thorsonson here, are happy to answer any questions.
Hey, before we go there, Charlie, I want you to go ahead, and because this ties directly to item G, I don't know how you can move till there's a final determination of what we do on G, what you can do with H at all.
Correct. And Mayor, the point of clarification I'd like to ask from staff is, of the different tasks that you outlined, number three appears to me to be really sole and separate of the TMDL issue. This is part of our stormwater permit and something that is going to take extensive staff time to address. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is separate but related as we're dealing with water quality regulations. So that was the reasoning for wrapping these items together.
Okay. You know, in a perfect world, I'd like to approve that portion because of the amount of time that the staff needs to spend on it and hold the TMDL aspect. But I'm not sure how to get there and/or if it makes sense or if we just wait two weeks.
Mayor and Council, I would recommend that you continue this item to the same October 13th date because if the council doesn't approve the settlement agreement, then the scope, as you recall, the original contract's scope of work included expert witness time and fees. So if the settlement agreement isn't approved and we proceed forward with litigation, the scope of work's going to have to change to include, you know, additional consulting and expert witness and proceed forward on the appeal. So, you know, it really sort of, you'd have to make a change anyway. So I would recommend they just be both approved or both dealt with at the same time.
Well, I think, at least from what I've heard, there's a possibility that the TMDL will not be approved and may be set back or whatever, whatever the desires are. So with that, with that possibility, I don't know how in the world we can anticipate going forward with this.
And so Mayor, my follow-up comment there, and then I would be prepared to make a The settlement agreement is where the issue lies. I, if we were to approve that today, I'd have no problem approving this agreement. Again, as I mentioned earlier, AMEC has sent representatives up numerous times. I don't feel the need for them to attend the next meeting because I don't have questions related to their scope of work or what they've been doing. I've been pleased with the work they've done for the city to date. So with that, I would move to table item H.
For the same timeframe?
To October 14.
Till October 13th, 14th?
13. 13, 14. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Public comment?
Yeah.
I certainly don't want to...
Well, it's, it's...
It's up to you, but normally you don't take a comment on procedural...
Yeah, we're not even, we're tabling any even discussion on this, Gary. Thank you. We had a motion? We had a second?
Yes.
Vote?
Passes six to zero.
Counsel, anything further? Or adjourn?